Seven, I'd like to call this work session of the King William County Board of Supervisors to order. Ms. Lawrence, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Miskowski. Mr. Hodges?
Here.
Mr. Garber?
Here.
Mr. Moran?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here. Next item we have on the agenda is the review and adoption of the meeting. Anyone have any concerns or changes?
Mr. Chair, I'll move adoption.
Mr. Chair, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion made in a couple of seconds. Ms. Lawrence, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye. Okay, next item we have on the agenda is work session matters for a planning and zoning proposed fee schedule, Mr. Ron Eter, Director of Community Development. You're muted. Okay, now you should be all right. There you are.
Evening, gentlemen.
Evening.
I wanted to bring the proposed fee schedule to you all tonight. The staff has reviewed the current fee schedules and determined revisions were needed to address the changes in the type and quantity of development within the county. The recommended revisions to the fee schedules primarily based on the fees and the size of projects and their complexity. The fees reflect the time expenses occurred for reviews, inspections by staff, as well as contracted services for inspections and reviews. Fee schedule must be approved through ordinance requiring public hearing. A public hearing is scheduled for May 18th. That is not true. Upon completion, the public hearing staff recommends approval of the revised fee schedule. Due to advertising issues, we're going to have to do the public hearing at the regular meeting of the board in June if you all decide you want to proceed with that. The attachment, it shows what our current fees are and what the proposed fees are and whether they were changed or not. And I'm happy to answer any questions concerning the fees that you all might have.
Mr. Chair, question?
Yes.
Ron, on the land disturbance permit residential, I noticed that the inspection process has been removed under the proposed fee. Is there, can you explain the rationale?
Well, the inspections is $125. It's for anything less than five acres.
Okay, so there will still be inspections or that's been on?
Yes, sir.
Oh, it's just not clear under the proposed fee? Okay.
Ron, if I may, under site plan, it will, am I correct, it will no longer be a, you're going to eliminate a $1,500 site plan fee?
Yes, sir. We're going to base it on the acreage based on the size of the projects. And what I did was I took a look at what our current fees, you took the $1,500 and looked at what we had. And once you start going over $750, you know, and do $10 per acre, it doesn't really impact the job, the small jobs now. No big increase for them, but it does take into account the larger scale jobs that keep coming up. And we also added that before that 1,500 was just a flat fee. It didn't matter, didn't matter how many times they had to resubmit to get approval. So we did add some language in there, some fees in there to take into account that, to pay for the second and third submittals. Typically, most jobs take at least three submittals before they can get approved.
Under subdivisions, minor subdivisions, am I correct that it's, it's not going to be a fee anymore for a minor subdivision?
And we took that part out because it's going to, we have a fee of subdivision, and that's going to take care of minor subdivisions. Any subdivision will be $500 plus $25 per acre. So if you come in to do a minor subdivision, the fee will be the subdivision fee. Doesn't matter whether it's minor, major, what the subdivision is, it's going to be at that calculated rate.
So overall?
Get away from...
Go ahead.
No, it's just a matter of trying to eliminate the guesswork and doing flat fees. It's just made more sense to bill by size for any kind of subdivision.
So overall, how, how is this going to affect the revenue coming through your office? Is it pretty much going to be a wash?
Well, the whole idea behind it was to make it more equitable for us. We basically haven't been charging anything close to what we should be for the amount of time and effort we put into it. So it should increase the revenues coming through the office to pay for our inspectors and for our contracted services.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we need to like give you a nod or something to bring it up to the next meeting?
I just really wanted to bring it for your consideration before it went to public hearing. I originally wanted to get it into this, into the next regular work session, which I was, in my head, I was thinking it was tonight, and it's not. And we haven't been able to advertise it, and it needs public comment. And, but I did want the board to have a chance to look over it before the public comment period.
Oh, and since the meetings next week, it's not enough time to, to get a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There is not enough time to get a public hearing.
Right, because we had to push the meeting up, which is later on in the agenda because our meeting schedule was scheduled from a roll day. Right. All right, anyone else? Okay, seen none, I guess we'll move on to 4B, which looks like large-scale power stations, Resolution 20-17. Again, Mr. Ron Eter, Director of Community Development.
At the February 26th Planning Commission work session, the commissioners agreed to recommend to the Board of Supervisors to review the standards, application procedures, and land use suitability relating to large-scale power stations. The commission recommends that application reviews and public hearings for new large-scale power stations be halted until further notice. The commission felt that this step is necessary to allow for the thorough review of the impacts solar facilities have on the county and how solar fits into the future land use of the county. This review should include recommendations for revisions to the performance standards for solar removal of solar facilities as a permitted use in the county. This resolution is intended to apply to conditional use permit applications for solar power stations as defined in the code, William, King William. The utility scale facilities are those that sell power to the grid. The DEQ defines small renewable energy projects solar as projects as 150 megawatts or less. For the purposes of this resolution, the facility size isn't relevant. And the, let's see, oh yeah, the Planning Commission at the meeting of March 12th, 2020, determined that the subcommittee chair, Mr. John Braden, would solicit individuals from the community to serve on the subcommittee. These individuals be a cross-section of stakeholders in development of the community and with general public interest. The subcommittee will be formed over the next two weeks, anticipate having the first meeting in April. Again, this, everything got kind of pushed back on that. And however, staff does recommend, or wanted to present this to the Board of Supervisors tonight so that we can begin, or so the Planning Commission can begin forming the work group. And there's been a lot of back and forth. Mr. Greenwood, I believe, wanted Board of Supervisors input on who's on the committee. And so tonight, I'm asking the board on behalf of the Planning Commission to approve the resolution, holding back on any, accepting the applications, and determine how the work group can be put together.
Is that all? Right?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. I thought we had at the Planning Commission, we came up with a list of names. We don't want to give that out tonight, or?
No, sir. Mr. Braden and I talked earlier, and he hasn't, you had mentioned that you wanted to see the list before, but he wanted to contact the participants that he was considering before he made their names public.
Okay, all right.
That was one of the things he wanted me to present to you all tonight. You want his involvement as the chair of the subcommittee? He was a little confused after listening to the minutes, or listening to the last Board of Supervisors, which way you all intended to go, or want the...
Hey, Ron.
...to go with this work group.
I'm sorry, Ron, I'm having difficulty. Is anyone else having difficulty hearing?
Yeah, I'm having a real problem.
You're, you're just on a Wi-Fi connection, aren't you?
Why don't you turn your camera off, Ron, and see if you can clear up some of your Just go audio only. There you go.
All right, Ron.
Is that any better?
Say a little bit more.
Is it any better? Can you hear me?
It sounds so right now. Do you have pending requests at this point?
No, sir.
Okay.
There's no applications in right now.
And what did you say John suggested? We didn't hear. You were all garbled at that last, what you said about what John suggested?
Well, John wanted to know if the, how the Board of Supervisors wanted to establish the work group, if you wanted planning commissioners on it or not.
At our last meeting, we were just suggested that we wanted to see the list. I don't think we really came up with who was going to be on it, but I guess we could canvas now and see what people think. I think a little bit of everybody should be on it. I think you should be on it, maybe, maybe a planning commissioner if they want to. I mean, what does everybody else think?
And I think I was the one that had the most to say about our input into how this would be impaneled. You know, ultimately, yeah, we would like to maybe see a draft of what Mr. Braden has proposed, what the Planning Commission has proposed, just make sure that we, as a board, are satisfied that it captures a wide enough array of individuals and stakeholders that we're comfortable moving forward with it. And if we're not, then obviously we would make suggestions for either improving or expanding that. So that would be, that would be what I would want to say, see a draft list of the panel and, you know, what they're, in addition to names, where they're coming from, what their purpose is. Are they from the solar industry? Are they, you know, landowners near a solar facility, et cetera, as to why and who they would be representing on the panel?
Yeah, I agree with Travis is that this was supposed to have a broad swath of citizens. I don't know that this was going to be anything technical that the, the folks that had gone through the suite solar and got churched up on the technical aspects. I think this is more of a political, environmental, societal sort of review, but maybe wrong on that, but pretty much agree with Travis.
Well, for the most part, I believe the intent was to get a consensus in the county of whether solar is appropriate use of our land here in King William County. That was one of the big issues and the basic reason for forming this sort of work group.
But really, this resolution is only dealing with putting everything on hold right now. We can hash out the rest of that later, correct?
Yes, sir. This is just to make sure that I have the authority to not take in any additional applications right now.
Well, I'll make the motion to accept Resolution 20-17.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion made and properly seconded, but I wanted to make a comment here. This isn't that, Ron, you can't accept them. If permits come in, you have to accept them. That's what the lawyer said. I got clarification on that. If they come in, right, you have to take...
They don't have to process them.
Right, you have to accept them, but, and then we have 12 months to deal with it, so we need to really expedite this, he said, to get it done within 12 months in case something happens. So I just wanted to make that clear. Any other discussion on that?
Yeah, I want to ask Ron, I know that we, you don't have any applications, but it is solar groups out there that are trying, still trying to piece together the acreage, or that's not happening right now either.
I only address what I have in the office. I do know that there are some negotiations going on in the county from what I've been told. I don't know what the status of them are or how far along they are.
All right, thank you.
Ron, a question on the actual resolution. Paragraph two says, "As a result, will not intend to refer such applications to the Planning Commission," and then paragraph three says, "refers the review of the ordinances to the Planning Commission." Maybe I'm just not reading it correctly, but seems a little...
Now I'm having trouble hearing you add.
Yes, on paragraph two, it says, of the resolution, it says, "And as a result, will not intend to refer such applications to the Planning Commission or schedule public hearings." Paragraph three says, "Board Supervisors refers the review of the ordinance to the Planning Commission."
That's returning to the review of the ordinance, not the applications.
Yeah, I mean, basically that's saying that we're not going to refer any of the applications to the Planning Commission, but we're empowering the Planning Commission to review the ordinance.
Okay.
And in that same vein, if I may, in line 13, Mr. Wagner called me earlier today, and I, he wanted me to change the wording from review of the ordinance policies and standards for which applications for solar power stations to the Planning Commission for its recommendations. He didn't like the term "under," but that's completely up to the board if they want to make that, approve the resolution with that minor change.
We, didn't we, I think we just approved it as written, didn't we?
We had a motion to accept it as written, yeah, but we can modify that. But if nobody sees anything wrong with it, does anybody see, is it like a shall or must kind of thing? Or what does until and, or the other wording mean? Verbage is really all it is.
Either way, I don't think the interpretation would be any different, any different.
Yeah, I agree, Stuart. Anybody else?
No, I, I don't see where that language makes a difference.
Yeah, I don't either. Okay, well, we have a motion made, and it's properly seconded already as it is. So Ms. Lawrence, could you call a roll, please?
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item we have on the agenda is 4C, Virginia Retirement System Enhanced Benefit Election for Fire and EMS Employees, Resolution 20... Doesn't look like we have, wait a minute, a number, 20XX, it says. Ms. Nita McIntyre, Manager of Human Resources.
Hello, everyone. Tonight, the staff of King William, I'm sorry?
They just said hello.
Tonight, the staff, the staff of King William County asked that you consider a resolution to include the King William Fire and EMS Department employees for the enhanced hazardous duty benefit offered by the Virginia Retirement System. This benefit establishes special requirements for age and service years in hazardous duty position and an additional amount added to their pension income upon retirement. The enhanced hazardous duty benefit also provides the option of disability retirement. The King William Sheriff's Department deputies are currently covered by this benefit and were added in 2008 when the General Assembly passed legislation allowing their inclusion. In order to cover the employees of the county's fire and EMS department, a resolution must be adopted by the board and provided to the Virginia Retirement System. We hope that you will adopt this resolution in your meeting on May 18.
Ms. Tessen, do we have a number for this?
A dollar amount?
No, 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 the number of the resolution, we got 20-XX.
No, sir. What we did is we brought it to you as a draft, and we will bring it back to you for formal action on the 18th.
Okay, okay. Does anyone else have any questions?
Off of that question, it, it doesn't appear that there's a dollar commitment from the county for this, is that?
There, there always is with this. If we've got people that have years in service, you're going, we're going to have to catch them up, correct, Ms. McIntyre?
Yeah, that's what I want to clarify.
This is, this is in the current budget for FY '21. Our VRS, our total contribution for the county for all employees are impacted. It was a half a percent that it went up to include this. However, we received our latest actuarial study that affects the rates for FY '21 and '22. Overall, our rate dropped by an entire percent. So in essence, this brought it a half a percent less than what we have been paying for the last two years.
That makes it easier. Yeah.
It does.
That's good news for a change.
So this applies to, to full-time fire EMS or as well as part-time?
Correct, just, just the full-time who are currently enrolled in VRS anyway.
Any idea how many employees fit that category?
Currently, it's six. There are, there is one new person who'll be starting June 1st, so that will make it seven, and then we have the two empty positions that we're still trying to fill.
But this is a standard all over the state, pretty much, correct?
It is, and it's just because we recently established the department, and they weren't, they were put into hybrid until we could pass, do the actuarial study, and then pass a resolution to include them.
This is pretty de rigueur for that type of employee than we, rolling into what we already do.
Correct.
And we just need a motion to carry it forward now till the next meeting, correct?
I wouldn't even think we need that, this was just discussion of it, and I think we're probably good to go ahead and get it on the next agenda and finalize that, that number.
I'm good with it.
And, yeah, I'm good.
I'm good with it.
All right, thank you, Ms. McIntyre. Next item we have on the agenda is item 4D. Let's see. Nope, wait a minute. Yeah, back again, Human Resources Policies and Procedures Manual Update. Ms. Nita McIntyre, Manager of Human Resources, again, thank you.
Tonight, we're presenting a recommendation for several changes to be made in the county Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. The first change is in Chapter 4, Section 4-4. It's revised to add long-term disability insurance coverage for all employees. Currently, only the employees enrolled in the VRS Hybrid Plan have long-term disability insurance. The county will be adding a policy which will be paid by the county, providing the same long-term disability coverage for the VRS Plan 1 and 2 participants. Chapter 5, Section 5-2, Annual Leave. This includes changes to the terms of the annual leave payout upon voluntary separation to be a maximum of the 10-year accrual limit or their current accrued amount, whichever is less. And terminated employees will no longer receive a payout of their accumulated annual leave. Section 5-3, for sick leave, we added language requiring a doctor's note if more than two consecutive days of work are missed. We also amended the language for sick leave sharing pool to include the sick leave balances from all separating employees to be added to the pool. 5-14, we revised language to eliminate the payout of sick leave hours upon separation. Employees separating after July 1st, 2020 will not receive payment for their accrued sick leave. The exception to this is if the employees provide proof that they've submitted their retirement papers to VRS by July 1st. Chapter 12, Section 12-1, we removed the language for payout of the sick leave accruals and amended the language for paying annual leave accruals without proper separation notice. We hope you will consider adopting these amendments in the May 18th board meeting.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Yes, I, I've been weighing in on this with several folks. I've sent an email for your consideration. I've got a few bits of feedback. The sick leave for those employees that were with us from January 2016 until the notional 1 July that, under the guidelines and rules that we had in place, were eligible to be paid out their sick leave should they retire. I feel strongly that that's, that was a contract, however you want to interpret that, but that was a deal we made with these employees, and they deserve that period of time if and when they should retire, from January 2016 to, if it's 1 July, then fine. Anything after that? I completely agree with the concept going forward, but it's just that period of time from January 2016 to current.
Okay, I guess I'm concerned, what does the date, January of 2016, why is that such a special date?
That was when the handbook, whatever this thing is called, this, this document was updated at that time to include getting compensated for accrued sick time. Prior to that, that, that concept didn't exist, to my understanding.
Just my opinion, I don't think it's a contract. I think it's a benefit, and we can change benefits at any point in time. We could never change benefits if we went down that route.
So you're going to, you want to take away something that the employees had an understanding that they had this benefit? And whether they chose to use it or whatever reason they chose to go ahead and continue to accrue it, you want to take that away because it's a benefit change? I don't get it.
I agree with Bill. I came from a place that we never had sick leave to begin with, and this is a compromise. Originally, we were going to allow no rollover at all. It's my understanding we're still going to allow the rollover. You're just not going to get a payout when you retire or voluntarily separate. You know, sick leave... You know, sick leave originated, in my opinion, for illness and accrual can help you during a catastrophic illness. We're not, we're not taking that away. You know, I came from a place that we steadily lost benefits throughout the years. You know, this is, this is not something that I think any of us want to do. I think that the times have dictated, we need to, you know, this might save a job or two.
We're going to save that going forward. The agreements that we had with county employees for that magic date of January 2016 till today was in place. And now we want to rip that from them. I don't think it's fair.
Well, you know, that's just my opinion. I can, I can say that again, you know, Stephen, what does the state do? When, when you separate, can you, can you turn that into a cash payment?
No, they took that away from us about five or six years ago. Yeah, we lost everything back then, so I agree. It's a, it's not a contract, it's a personnel policy. And personnel policies can change every month if we have to. It's unfortunate, but, I mean...
Benefits change, benefits change, I mean.
It's better than putting people on furlough or giving them a 20 cent, 20% pay cut. And I know a lot of companies are doing that right now, so at least we're keeping them on payroll. But, I mean, I don't, I can see where Ed's coming from, but I don't think it makes, it's, it's not worth it for that small amount of time. And like I said, personnel policies, it's just like the comp plan. It's a living document. It can change whenever we decide to change it. It's, it's fluid. So, I mean, it's up to what the board decides, and I'll go whichever way they decide, but I agree with not doing it.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I've discussed this with a few of you guys and have been discussing it with other HR professionals and just trying to get kind of a feeling of what people are doing. And there's a lot of different ways that they handle it. I'll say probably, after these discussions, I, I think Mr. Moran has a, has a point here that this would negatively impact, you know, not too many employees, but some employees that have been, you know, in place for quite a while. I would feel pretty good backing the idea that we would, you know, basically lock in place whatever hours had been accrued from that time that we adopted the manual until whenever the change takes effect and have that available, you know, as a, as a payout upon separation. You know, and again, mostly, I don't think it's affecting too many employees from what I can gather, and those employees that it is affecting had, had been looking to this as a potential benefit when they retire. And the, the negative impact would be, in some cases, pretty severe, but I think even doing this, it, it then limits that liability against time that was accrued in the years before this policy was initially put into place. You know, you guys know me and, and the way that I have worked here my entire term of service, I really do try to look out for those people that, you know, are loyal to the county. And, and so after some discussion, I think that Ed might be right. He might be sending, not even sending a message, it's just treating some employees, I think, a little more unfairly than others, especially those that have been around for a while and have given a long time of service. So, that's just my two cents on it. I would like us to maybe take some more time to consider this, at least this section of, of the update, and really try to grasp the, the impact and try to capture maybe what the fiscal liability of that would be and try to understand it a little bit better, because the deeper I've gone with this, the more, the more I've, I've kind of realized that this, this has a bit of a, more impact, especially on certain employees than other.
I can see where you're coming from, Travis, too, but like Stuart said, with the state, the state wasn't just a few people, it was thousands of people. Thousands of people lost all that they may have done that, and that's another thing I wanted to bring up. People just did that because they would still come to work sick, use this time thinking that they might bank it up because they were going to get it, but then the state pulled it away because it's a personnel policy. It's something that has to be done globally. It's, in our case, it's just going to have, affect a few people. What about state? I mean, it was thousands of people that lost lots of money, so, but that's just my two cents, too, so.
Well, I've never wanted to model HR management after the Commonwealth, because they've always done such a really good job of taking care of their employees, we know. And regardless of how the state's fit to treat their employees from time to time, I, I do want to maybe encourage us to take some time to consider this and, you know, because the more that I have thought about this and talked to people about this, you know, my mind has been a little bit, a little bit changed from where I was a couple of weeks on this because, you know, that I was, you know, the first one to chime in and say, no, we need to, we need to move forward with this. And I, you know, pointed again that we will be changing the policy moving forward to where the accrual does not provide a financial benefit once we make this change. It will only be for this period from which we initially adopted the change that did pay it out to the time that we end it as providing payout. And that would be the, the, the hours that were frozen in time, as it were, until the employees are ultimately separated. Or if they dip into that time, then it goes, then it goes lower, but they won't be able to accumulate additional hours for payout after we make the change, if I understand it to be Mr. Moran's.
Exactly. To everyone that's talking about what state do and what your previous employer, we have the ability, we have the authority to affect the change for our employees. And I think we have that, we have that duty and responsibility. State, nothing you could do about it. Previous jobs, union, nothing you could do about it. We have the ability to affect this outcome.
Well, let me, let me ask a question. Is anybody familiar with any other counties, what they do? I mean, to me, the definition of sick leave, you know, if you're going to, if you're going to use that as, as a, as a payoff when you retire or voluntarily separate, regardless of whether you grandfather in employees or not, it's, it's a misuse. You know, it's there, it's there. Those people who have needed to use it, have used it, it is, it is, it is a good feeling when you're sick knowing that, that you have pay coming in, and that in itself is a, a major benefit. So many people don't have that. And I just want to reiterate again, you know, we are, we're in hard times, everybody sacrificing and, you know, and those directly involved in this, you know, you, you're going to be disenchanted. It's, it's human nature. And, and nobody wants to do this. Believe me, I don't, but, you know, we have to start somewhere, you know, things can get a whole lot worse than what they are now. But, anyway, that's just my two cents.
What I, my question and with what you said, Travis, it threw something in there. So, the totals at 20, January of 2016 don't count?
They, they shouldn't, as I understand Ed's proposal, it would be whatever is accrued from that date to the date that we make the change. That, that might be overcomplicating things, but I think that's the spirit of the, of the proposal.
Exactly, Bill. Prior to January 2016, this agreement did not exist with county employees, so that's...
I mean, I could, I could live with that, I'll be honest with you. I still think it's a benefit. I don't think it's a contract, but I could live with that. I don't know, it, it's going to make it a nightmare for Ms. McIntyre.
Yeah, that's, that's going to be a nightmare.
That's what I was thinking, but, I, I mean, I could live with that, because they didn't have that benefit before January. And I had just come on the board, I don't even remember this. It definitely didn't bring all this discussion, putting it in.
Just so that I'm clear, for what you're looking for, this would be employees that were hired after January 1 of 2016. Because the ones that you hired previous to that did not have that benefit.
No, I think what they're really saying...
Were hired in 20... I'm sorry.
But I'm sorry, too. It's, leave accrued from that date to July 1 of this year, is my understanding, would be, they could get paid out for it. May become a nightmare, because now you're going to say, okay, if they burn any, are they burning the old stuff or the new stuff?
Right.
So...
What he's saying is from what was accrued from January 1 of 2016 to July 1 of 2020, that's the only period of time this has to be calculated for this supposed benefit contract. So, you're going to have to figure out just those hours between those years for everybody, not new hires, everybody that was on payroll, January 1, 2016. How many hours they've accrued since then to July 1 of this year, and that is going to have to be separated and they can get paid for just that. That's what I said, it's going to be a nightmare.
But, again...
What about the ones, or what about the ones who were eligible, would have been, that had recently retired, that were on payroll 2016, say they went out in 2018? They were already paid, correct?
Oh, yeah, a little bit, yeah.
Okay.
And the same thing if they want to retire before July 1.
Right, as long as the paperwork's in by July 1.
I think it's, it's, it's going to become a headache, I think, Ms. McIntyre. How are you going to do that as far as figuring? You'll figure, you get, easy to figure how much they earned during that time, but are they using, if they dip into their sick leave, are they using the old and the new, or what?
Well, my concern is, if I'm looking at how many hours they accrued during that four-year period, roughly four-year period, then any time that they took during that four-year period would need to be subtracted from that.
No, but I'm talking about...
So, it's not just how much they accrued. So, in essence, it would be whatever they had on the books as of, as of this July 1.
So, Ms. McIntyre, look at my email to you, I think you were CC 30 April, to clarify my, my intent, which I think everyone, I know Mr. Miskowski agrees, but is it not a first in, first out? Can you, does your system track accrual?
No, our system is just a cumulative system.
Oh, yeah, our financial software doesn't do that. It's not, it's not going to be an easy task at all. Not currently, it doesn't.
May I make the recommendation, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
What I would like is for us to be able to bring back the resolution for approval at the 18th meeting. And since y'all seem to be okay with not paying out sick leave as of July 1, leave that in there. But we will put language in the resolution. If we cannot bring you something back at the 18th meeting that appeases everyone on this four-year period, we'll put language in the resolution to let them, so that we are working on it, so that the resolution doesn't close the door. How is that? Because there are other avenues in this resolution and changes to the HR manual that need to be addressed. Would the board be okay with that? That we will try to come up with some type of scenarios that will address that four or four and a half year period.
I'm good with you looking at that, and I think you should, to see how much this is going to entail to try to even put it into place.
Well, I think if it's, if it's everybody tonight, then it would probably benefit us to go ahead and work up some numbers and language so that the board, if the board understands it, then the staff will understand it. And then you can select the best for the most appropriate path, but the rest of the resolution and the changes to the HR manual deal with basically just ceasing to make the payments as of July 1 for sick leave, and I think that y'all are still in agreement on that.
Yeah, that, that sounds all right. If you can come up with something, yeah.
I would recommend taking a, an eligible employee and using him as a test case and run the numbers and then...
Why?
That sounds practical.
That would work. Just don't tell us the name, just use, yeah, use some figures, like use one with the least amount of time and use one with the most amount of time and just give us examples, and that way we can see.
Okay, and what we'll do is we will send that out to y'all as soon as we get it developed, so that you can have it before Monday, because we won't be able to get it in the packet that goes out tomorrow.
Right, because it's a week away, yeah.
And, and again, just realize that this proposal that we're talking about right now is actually a compromise from what we were originally talking about.
Yeah, I'm aware of that, and the, and the point that, you know, others have been paid, we can't correct the historical facts of this, but that's just, that's just a fact. But we can try to, I think, come to a resolution that is, as, as fair as possible, and I don't think Mr. Moran or myself want to create an administrative nightmare if we can help it. But if we can just get an idea of, of what this would take, if it's doable, if it's completely undoable, what, what some other options might be. But we don't want to leave some employees who were, you know, counting on this because it was offered to them, you know, holding an empty bag. So, just seems unfair to him, and I agree that it seemed unfair to me as well.
That sounds good. Or if maybe, like I said, maybe another option, they could come up with a dollar amount. But like I said, I don't know how they would figure it out, a dollar amount, like Ms. McIntyre said, I guess you'd have to take into effect if people used it or not, and then maybe add that to everybody's, somehow to the policy, I don't know. Anyway, maybe Ms. Tesner, Ms. McIntyre, and Ms. Jordan Lee can come up with a good couple of ideas. All right, anybody else? All right, so we'll hope to see some things on that before the meeting and then see how it goes. Next item we have on the agenda for E, Fire and EMS Update. Chief Laura Nunley, interim chief of Fire and Emergency Services. Is Laura, oh, yes, she is.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can anyone hear me?
Oh, yes.
Wonderful. You have a very quick report. Our call volume has been down due to the virus, which is a good thing. I heard from Hanover Friday after you got my update that they are going to allow their employees to start to work part-time again, which is fantastic. We're going to reintegrate them into the schedule so that we can take some of the workload off of our part-time and full-time employees who have worked countless hours trying to make sure that we get coverage. During this time, there has been one 12-hour period when we have gone below minimum staffing and only had two at the firehouse. The ambulance is currently over at the radio shop, and as soon as it gets done getting everything that it needs, we will be able to bring it home and put it into service. So, it should be in service in the next, I'm hoping, week if they get everything they need from the radio shop. The only thing that's slowing that up is because delivery on any type of mail system right now is slow. We have a supply as of Friday afternoon coming in of surgical gowns and face masks from the National Guard that's sent to us from Viden. And besides that, that is all we have going on at this moment. Does anyone have any questions?
Excited about the, the ambulance. How are we doing on, I've seen a report that we've got stock on PPE. Is, how good is that stock? Is that going to carry us through? Are we still looking for more?
Our stock on PPE is good. We have, because everything is running through the state, we have, unfortunately, the way that it works is the counties that have the highest impact of the coronavirus are obviously going to get everything first, so we are only up to 12 cases, so that puts us low on the list. However, we have been very good and we have systems in place so that if we run out of certain things, we have a backup. We have this new shipment, which I believe I'm getting 75 masks and 75 gowns from the National Guard. So, as of right now, we are doing good. The blessing has been that our call volume has gone down. People don't want to go to the hospital because they're afraid of the hospital right now, so that has helped us keep our PPE and manage it well. And we also can now reuse things like N95 masks and surgical masks per the CDC. So, there are, there are systems in place so that everybody has assigned masks as they get them and they can use them and reuse them, so that, too, will help keep our supply going. I suspect this will probably be something... I suspect this will probably be something that even after the virus is gone, that will be part of our day-to-day practice, depending on what we're responding to.
Go ahead, go on. You can go ahead.
Oh, Chief, have you looked into the, I believe it's the ultraviolet disinfection? I think University of Virginia was, was building these little kits to be able to go in and disinfect the masks. Have you heard anything about something like that?
I have not heard anything about that in particular. I know that we have, we've looked at several different disinfectants. We have bought a fogging machine that helps us disinfect all of our equipment in the firehouse. And they have just put in in Chesterfield, one of five in the United States cleanings for all of our PPE and so forth. It is a large cleaning machine that you can bring in so that we can start to reuse things. But no, I, I don't know anything about that, but I promise you I'll look that up.
I think we'll all try to help, there's a lot of information. But I believe it's just a big ultraviolet light that you just hang your mask up and hit it for a few minutes and supposedly total disinfection. But we'll look into it with you.
Yeah, I heard that with VCU.
Absolutely.
Yeah. VCU showed that on the news. It's a, they made a wire rack and they hung all their masks on it and they put the UV light 12 minutes on each side and it disinfects them and they can use them again. Yeah, they had it on the news.
That was it.
Yeah.
I've actually got the UV light, but I, I still have a question if it's killing anything because there's no way for me to tell you.
I say it works.
The FDA said so, so.
Yeah, that's right.
Um, no, but I will absolutely look into that. Because if that is something that is inexpensive, and again, I, although I do know that we will slowly go back to normal living in the United States, I do believe that this is going to be one of those incidents that changes the way we handle PPE up to and including our flu patients as we move forward in the fire and emergency services.
Okay, y'all, y'all are not having to use anything less than N95, correct?
Uh, no, sir, we actually are using N95s or surgical masks. Some of our, we began fit testing for N95s last week. The CDC and the Health Department state that the, the way an N95 mask works and the N95 mask, how OSHA is, is when you are tested for an N95 mask, you are not only tested for size, you are tested for brand. So it's, and I'm just going to use two of Dan's names. If you are tested for a Smith N95 and you fit into a Smith small, you cannot wear a Jones N95 small. So none of our employees have been fit tested to date as we came into this. And getting N95 masks in the beginning was next to impossible. So there has now come a point where we're starting to get N95 masks where we can have them fit tested and that we can keep the supply going. We had, I think I have 100, 100 of each size right now, with the exception of the extremely large one, but we don't have anyone, I believe, that's going to fit into that. So the CDC recommends if you cannot do an N95, then you are to do a surgical face mask and on yourself and the patient, and that is what our protocol states.
Yeah, those N95s, they need to be fitted, but I'm going to tell you, they're uncomfortable after a certain amount of time if they're fitted properly.
They are, and you'll, you'll also see if, if anybody's been watching the news, there's been several people, i- if they do fit appropriately, they do not allow the CO2 to leave. And so you are literally, if you were prolonged a big period of time, you pass out. That is absolutely right. So they are uncomfortable and if worn incorrectly can be very dangerous.
Uh, the ambulance for the tires, how long is that going to be down?
Oh, it's done and back on the road.
Okay.
Yep, they do it. We go across the street to Troy's. They have been absolutely wonderful to us since Rick and I began coming into this and we are always first priority with them. So Friday morning it went in, they fixed it and came back.
All right.
Right.
And express to them we do appreciate it.
Yeah.
We, we absolutely do that. That is a cherished relationship because there have been several times where they have kind of stopped everything in the midst of what we've got going on so that they can go in and just fix something, even if it's a broken hose on our main ambulance so that we don't have to do the shuffle. So I am, I love that they're one across the street, two willing to work with us, and three that we are going to have another new ambulance. That will give them a break too.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, on station one, it's closed to the public, which we understand. Do you feel that under the guidelines and situation that we're in, it'll probably remain that way?
Uh, you know, I have, I have to look at it and decide what we're going to do. The, the biggest thing is what we don't want to do, depending on how the governor opens, we, the hall part is the most important thing. So we need to kind of be picky and choosy about what we're doing, about having people rent and go into the hall just because it's only slotted to have 95 people with tables in it and you, if we are keeping the six feet apart and all that, that could be a challenge. So I am literally going to take that on a week-by-week basis and just put it in line with the governor. When I originally closed everything down, I had us closed on the school system. We, that was how I wrote it so that all of our, anyone who had rented the hall up until this point, that they knew that we were following the school system's schedule. Obviously with us going into summer, that's not going to work. So as they, we start to open things back up, that is on my list of how we will do that. I know that not only from the hall point of view, but having the public being able to come to their fire station and see the apparatus and bring their kids in, especially with all that's going on, that's, that's a big thing. We, we did do a drive-by last week for a five-year-old boy who, it was his birthday and all he wanted was a fire truck. So we did a drive-by of his house with the lights and the sirens and did a stop and a wave. So I know how important it is to, to get it open back to the public. I just want to make sure that we do it in the appropriate way.
Thank you, it was good to hear that part.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ed.
Yes, so may I suggest we skip ahead to the Atlantic broadband briefing? We have two gentlemen, Mr. Scott Randall, Mr. Bill Newbord. Been hanging on, we're an hour into the session. If we could please let them give us an update.
Okay, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I am done. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Melon. Okay, we'll do that then, we'll skip ahead and go to, let's see, where is that one? The to G, 4G Atlantic broadband update?
Yes, and again, again, Vice President for the region, Scott Randall, and the Director for our region, Bill Newbord. Whichever one of you gentlemen we're going to present, it's yours.
Well, I will start off as Bill Newbord and thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. The presentation will be short. It is nice to see faces. A lot of us are working from home as well. And I will, I will say I'm probably not one that enjoys it, but by the same token, very fortunate that we're all still working. So the, the King William project consists of 107 pond groups and a pond is what serves pockets of homes. When it's built out, it's going to be passing about 2,766 passings. Someone have a question? Okay. Right now, we have 59 ponds are active, which is about 1,517 passings. And this is both commercial and residential. Or, so that's, you know, it's right around 55%. Customer base, we just passed over 600, so we're very happy with that. We have about 22 businesses in King William up and running with various services. Take rate's been pretty good. It, it doesn't, it looks a little misleading because right now, if you look at our active customers versus the total potential that are there, it's rated 40%. What makes that a little misleading is that each week we're adding new pond groups. So in other words, that's area we haven't had an opportunity to really work. So when you look in the areas that have been active, say for a month or, or two months and we've had some time to, to work with the customers, you know, the percentages are really more like 50, 52%. So I think at the end of the day, when the project is done, we're, we're going to exceed that and hopefully get up to about 60%. Virtually everybody is taking internet, but we have a very high percentage of two product and three product, which is good. So at the end of the day, we are extremely happy with the progress. COVID has been a challenge because we're not doing door-to-door sales. We're doing, for obvious reasons, we're doing a lot of mailings and we're doing phone calls. We've been able to secure some phone, not all phone numbers, but through marketing groups. And right now I have about 86 pending installs. So that'll put us really pretty close to 700. We'll probably have those knocked out. The majority of them, probably within the next two weeks, will be in. And hopefully it'll be another 86 behind that. Typical timeframe right now is running anywhere from 12 to 15 workdays. That's to get the service drop buried to the house, calling in miss utilities. They got to come out and mark. The crew comes out, puts in the service drop, the fiber drop, gets placed, and then immediately they are contacted for installation. Certainly not going to say here and, and say we've done it all perfect. We've had some hiccups periodically, but I think overall it's gone very well. We address concerns as they come up, whether it's, oh, you tore up my yard or we try and do the best we can to accommodate. And I guess those are the, those are the main highlights. I would expect that the project will be completed, I would say probably around the end of July, maybe a little bit sooner. We are, we're actually working in about, last number I saw was about 93 of the 107 pond groups we have construction ongoing. So there's, there's a lot of pieces. I have a couple easements I'm working on with commercial properties, which are going very well, but I, I can't complete that portion of it until I get to signed easement. So with that, I don't know if Scott wants to chime in or be happy to take any questions.
Bill, I think I'm good. You did a nice job. I'll, I'll be available to answer any questions if, if you can't field them.
All right, thank you.
Do you have something you could send out to us, like a contact? Because some people have asked me how they get in touch with you, like if they see you or something. And I mean, I don't, I've not been contacted, but I've seen you around the neighborhood. Are there ways to get hold of you or could you give something to the county administrator or?
Sure. I'll get our, I'll get our project manager, my name, salespeople. So, yeah, I'll get that to Bobby. I'll get something to her this week with contacts. When we had the office open, it was a little easier now that that's closed up. Again, it makes it a little bit difficult.
Right, then I didn't know if you had a, maybe a coverage map of what areas you've already done? Maybe if you just give us an idea of like how much is covered now?
Uh, should be, we can provide that. I don't have it today. But I can send that along, I can send that along to Bobby. I think, you know, another two months, we think the entire area of the maps that we've shown previously, it will all be active.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Anyone else?
Well, Scott and Bill, thank you very much for the info.
Well, thank you and, you know, Bobby knows how to reach me or, or pretty much anybody. I'm easy to get hold of, email or cellphone. And if you have any questions, concerns, please don't hesitate. And I thank you for the time this evening and I, I hope your meeting ends up being short.
Thank you very much, guys.
All right, thank you.
Be, be safe.
You too. Thanks, Ed. Okay, now I guess we'll go back to for F, meals tax update. Natasha Jordan-Leehan, Director of Financial Services.
Hey, how's everyone doing?
Good.
Um, this, I, I wanted to provide the board information regarding meals tax amnesty for our business owners in response to the, to the financial impact of COVID-19. Unfortunately, there does not seem to be a way to amnesty the meals tax as is considered a trust tax. A trust tax is one that is collected by a business from a customer at point of sale and is held until the due date to be submitted to the county. The board may push back the due date for 30, 60 or 90 days, but the funds would eventually have to be paid to the county. In the memo, we had stated that the only other option would be to repeal the meals tax, but then to reinstate the meals tax would require referendum vote by the citizens. But in the last annual assembly, that changed.
Right, right, I wanted to bring that up because the lawyer told me today that that has changed. We don't need to do that, we could just reinstate it ourselves.
Yes, that's correct. So when this memo was out, that, we hadn't had that information yet.
Right.
So, um, and I did include calendar year to date what we've received. And if you notice, we really didn't, we haven't seen an impact yet, but you have to keep in mind, we haven't seen the pays from April come through yet either. That won't come through until May 20th. But overall, it looks like we stay pretty consistent. The business is, we're staying consistent.
Thank you, any questions?
I know, I know the ones that I've talked to down in the West Point area, they say they're making more money now than they were before because they're doing delivery service and they're going to continue to do delivery service. So, of course, we wish this would have never happened, but maybe it won't all be negative.
I think the original intent was to.
If you look.
This was going to be an immediate relief effort for the businesses most impacted. And as it turns out, it's very well overcome by events where it's not as bad as we thought it was and it may just not be worth it at this point.
Well, and the, if you look at the bottom line of the report that I provided also, it, it might be a little misleading showing that we've, we took in more in March, but you have to kind of look at the individual businesses, what they were paying. And there is one specific one that hadn't paid for January, February until March. So, I mean, it kind of makes it look a little different than what it should. Even looking at this report, I am noting there are a few businesses that we haven't received taxes, the payment from them. So I can always follow up with the commissioner and find out what the status is on those businesses too.
That's the only question I had. Like I said, we can't mention names because we were told today from the lawyer, we're not supposed to publish this, so we had to redact everything online. But anyway, just doing generalities, like you said, a lot of them had zero. Were they just gone out of business maybe or they just hadn't turned in any of their taxes so far?
Um, I don't know. I can follow up with the commissioner and find out some additional information and emailing the board tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
One of them actually changed their name. So perhaps the new name hasn't been picked up yet.
Right.
Fellas, I want to let y'all know that I was somehow put on hold and had to redial the number the time I got through. I missed the whole presentation, but what y'all are speaking about it with zero? Yeah, I do see that at the bottom of the page, yeah, okay. Like I said, I'm on the tail end of this, but I'm sure my friends touched on all the pertinent questions.
Thanks, Stuart.
Ms. Tassanari, do we have any idea how well the EDA program? I haven't heard any updates on that from, from anybody on the EDA.
I'm sorry, are you speaking to me, Mr. Moskowski?
I was, yes.
Okay, I apologize. That went very well. The EDA gave out seven applications to, in fact, everyone that was eligible. There were certain criteria that were set. You had to be in good standing, have a current business license, things like that. And so out of the 14 or 15 applications, seven were eligible. They awarded the funds, $3,000 each. And we have another EDA meeting on Wednesday and we already have two more applications. And I personally gave out two of the awards myself to individuals that came by the office and they were most appreciative. It will help them keep their doors open. It will help them keep their doors open.
Great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Did we want to, um, Ed, did you want to discuss any more, change things or discuss anything? I know we had some stuff on here where we was maybe hold of it. Since we can't hold it, did you want to maybe pursue in the future, doing something or?
No, I think the, uh, the immediate effect is, is lost. That it was a good faith effort to try to, uh, to help our small businesses, especially our restaurants. But, uh, with the figures coming out, I guess if we have to wait until May twentieth to determine what the, uh, next round of impacts might be, it's really is too late at that point. But I think the option to, uh, absolve, um, a business that they won't be penalized if they were for some reason late in paying. I think that's the big thing. And we don't need to make any decisions on that, I assume.
Okay. Do we need to do anything for that, Ms. Tassanary with the Commissioner of Revenue? Or is that something she does?
I believe that she stated she was going to implement that, but, um, I got some conflicting information from our county attorney. So I was going to follow up with him tomorrow and just make sure that there was not something that the board has to do to act on.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Okay. Uh, seeing no one, we'll move on to four H. Oh, we have Parks and Recreation Program Update. Jennifer Lulox, Manager of Parks and Recreation.
Good evening. How is everyone?
Hey, pretty good.
Good to see you.
I'm going to start getting a complex. I'm always the last one to go.
The last is always best.
Thank you. We'll, we'll go with that. So from what I understand, you all have, um, my presentation or slides in front of you?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we're just going to wing through them. And if you have any questions, just tell me to stop. Some of the things we're going to talk about tonight are the park update, special events, our Play It Forward program, scavenger hunt, summer twenty twenty, fall twenty twenty, and some survey results. So we'll start off with the parks update. And if you look, go through, um, go forward one or two pages, you'll see some of the work that we've done up there. The first being the concession building up at the park. We've painted it and added some touches to it that we think families will like going up there. Certainly we think kids are going to like it, um, you know, going into a softball bathroom or baseball bathroom. And then inside there's some inspirational quotes and, you know, um, being positive and things like that. So we're excited about that. The walking trails, you'll see, uh, if you skip forward two pages, we've completed mapping out our walking trails. The next thing we're going to have to do is just create a giant map that we're going to have laminated and put up at the park. And it's all color coded. It will tell them how far they've gone, um, which path to go, uh, depending on how many miles they want to go. Let's see. If you go to the next slide, oh, uh, we'll update very quickly. The dog park, um, you know, we were right on the cusp of that right when all of this happened. So, um, Nestle is, um, they've submitted the invoices to, uh, their corporate office for payment. So it should be anytime now, uh, that we get started with that. So we're very excited. When you guys were talking before about community support, I just wanted to mention, because I think I have the connection with them, um, they have, they're feeding their employees every single day, uh, over at the plant. It's about three hundred and they have used every single one of our restaurants several times here in the community. So I, I think, uh, I think that speaks volumes about their support for the community. So we're excited about that. It's, it's a good little chunk of money to put back into the community. All right. Next there you'll see, uh, we built some steps just to make it a little bit safer, uh, going down that hill, uh, as you go back for the walking trail or you head back towards the dog park. And then, uh, the bridge over by the playground got some new, uh, railings. The other ones were falling apart, a little bit unsafe, so that's good right there. Special events, uh, this is what we hope to have coming up. And these are all subject to, you know, obviously what's going on in our community right now. So the cruise in, you know, I think some of these will be a welcome, uh, breath of fresh air for families to get out and enjoy each other's company and seeing people again, uh, being outside of their house. So the cruise in Friday nights, movies in the park, music in the park. I think we'll just, once we can do them, I think they'll all be, uh, very beneficial. And we are excited about those. Next we have our Play It Forward program, which I mentioned to you all, I think a couple of months ago when we first started. We have our first applicant here, our friend Kelly, who, uh, started a couple of times right before COVID came. Sweet guy, sweet, sweet guy, came in and, uh, did some separating for us, some shredding, and was very disappointed when all of this happened and he had to stay at home. So we are excited to see him again. We were up in the park one day and ran into a mom and we have another applicant. So we're excited to get them on board as well. Next page, uh, the community scavenger hunt. This people can do at this point in time, uh, we plan on introducing it next week out in the community. It's a free app that you load on your phone. We give you the first clue, which would be to start at the park. They have to find the place, the location inside the park, and then they scan a QR code and it gives them the clues for the next one. They go to that, so on and so on. So it just gets them out to, within our community, you know, the fire station up to the courthouse, some monuments, just things like that, some good family time outside of your house. We think they'll be limited, you know, social distancing will not be a problem. So we're excited about that. I, I think that will be fun for families to do with one another without getting in a crowd of people. You'll see there, that's very simple QR code. You just scan it. All right. So this summer, obviously we are waiting, uh, for the quarantine to lift. We probably won't be doing anything till potentially phase two, if not phase three of, um, of the guidelines that are currently out. So we're just waiting patiently. I think all of our programs are going to look a little differently now, um, as far as gloves, masks. We certainly are going to be in full compliance with the CDC guidelines. Working with the schools, their school year is going to look very different for kids too. So one of the things we're going to work on if we get ahold of these kids this summer is just the social and emotional, uh, challenges and things that have arisen through all of this. You know, the kids are not going to have to wear masks. You know, think about that when you first go to school and you look at your teacher and she's smiling at you. They're not going to have that now. They're not going to know if their teacher's smiling or frowning or, so we're going to work with them just how they can cope with those things and, um, you know, deal with them. Some of them may have lost family members. So we feel like, you know, using some play therapy or music and art really allows children to express themselves and hopefully work on, um, building back some self-confidence and, and some promise in our community. We all also are applying for some grants, um, just to help pay for some of these things. You'd be amazed at how many are out there right now, um, with everything that we're dealing with. So, uh, we'll keep you posted on those if we do actually receive any of them. I just put in our summer calendar here, just in case anyone wanted to know what was going on. I think I mentioned to you all Tuesdays, we're going to do cookies with the community and the county. And we will ask you guys, if you want to come out and read some stories and have cookies with the kids. And we're have the sheriff and you all and, and Bobby and Laura will come out. So I think it'll be good for kids to, uh, have a good feel for who's out and are leading our community. So that will be nice. Some new programs for the summer, uh, we've mentioned earlier, providing inclusion services. And actually we've had two parents who are thrilled about this. We will have what we'll call an inclusion coach working with, uh, their kids with disabilities so they can actually participate with their neighbors, you know, their friends, kids they're in classes with. So it's a really nice addition that we're able to offer this. Next, our CIT program, which is counselor and training. We are going to have, um, we have two young ladies who have applied already and they're going to be, uh, sort of working hand in hand with our staff, learning how to engage with kids, how to program plan, how to work on behaviors, things like that. So, um, with the hopes one day that they will then be able to work for us when they're older. But it's training them a little bit, uh, and, you know, having them help out extra hand where they can. All right. New classes for the fall. We're hoping we'll be out of this mess by then. The Outdoor Junior Ranger Program, we're going to be working with, um, our new, uh, game warden, Dan, and he's going to work on that class with us, getting out in the woods, identifying trees, working on some fun stuff. Next, mystery dinner theater. If any of you all would like to be an actor, I might be emailing you. Um, it's, it's super fun. It's, they come, you know, but mostly it's couples. They come out, they'll pay for dinner in the, the theater and they have to solve a mystery. And it's, it's a lot of fun. I think it will be really good for our community. Next is the escape room, which, um, a lot of people want, uh, activities for teenagers. So this will meet that and then younger kids as well, but I think this will be fun. Next one, Pumpkin Patch and Haunted Forest. And we say haunted forest very lightly. Just a fun opportunity to come out and have a mini festival in the park for a few days in October. So that will be, uh, that'll be good fun. And then next, uh, the last one, last two are survey results. We sent out a survey to all of our customers in our system. And there was about nine or 10 questions. I just put on here some of the results of the, the larger questions. Which programs do they participate in? You can see right there, it's after school and basketball are our very big ones. And we talked at one meeting, uh, a month or two ago about revamping our basketball program, just sort of, uh, making a little bit less cumbersome. So we're excited for that. After school, the same. New programs you can see there, um, what they're looking for. Youth programs, of course, they're always top on the list. Soccer, youth art, outdoor programs, teen programs. The walking trails were a big one, the dog park, park amenities. So I feel like we're at least starting to touch on those, um, you know, ahead of the game, which is nice. And then the last one there is, uh, what special events? So we've got the music, the movies, um, an outdoor parade, Christmas or Fourth of July, which I thought was great. We could certainly work on that. Community events, so they're sort of telling us, you know, we want to be part of a community. We want these things where the community can come together and relax and have fun and, and, you know, learn about each other. So, um, so we're excited. We're looking forward to the future. And that's all I have for you guys. Any questions for me? None at all?
Wanted to thank you. Nice presentation.
Well, you're very welcome. I look forward to seeing you guys all in person soon.
Me too.
Fine. Right to what I know. You're welcome. You're welcome.
Yeah.
Real quick, so on, on some of these survey results, you know, some of these things we have, we don't necessarily operate through the parks, like football, um, youth classes, would be arts alive, or directing people to, to those places. I guess is the most intriguing one for me because we had youth soccer, um, for, for a long time, but ultimately we dismantled that program because everybody had jumped ship and gone to Dynamo.
Yeah.
So, uh, are the winds shifting there? Are people leaving?
The winds are shifting and we are not using Dynamo. You know, we're, we're going to do it all in-house, um, just like our basketball program. We're going to ask for coaches. We're going to, um, you know, set up the teams ourselves. We've got, you know, staff on board with us right now that are more than capable of doing that. But we feel confident that we can do that with where we're at right now with COVID. I think for the fall, we are going to be better suited to do a soccer clinic this fall. You know, all ages, just come out and, and get your feet wet. And then next fall, we'll start with actual soccer league. But that's really just because of where we're, where we're at right now. But yeah, we, um, I got a lot of phone calls for soccer, so that's why we're bringing that back.
That's good to hear. Does Little League have an idea if they are going to have a season and if so, when they might start?
So we, uh, actually met with Troy, um, last Thursday and they have already decided they're not doing any of their Nationals or, you know, the big tournament, Little League, um, Nationals. They are hoping to still get out and have a season. I think they're going to give it another two weeks. And if they can't do it then, then I think they're just going to call it because then they'd be going, you know, deep into the summer. So I, I think they'll be excited for fall ball for sure. But yeah, that's where they're at now.
Well, this, this is all, all great, um, really good report, lot of, uh, really, uh, new and exciting things to look forward to, so.
Thank you, Travis. I appreciate that. We're excited as well.
Anybody else?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good.
The next item we have on the agendas for I, the Regional Animal Shelter Seizures Report. Ms. Tassanary, County Administrator.
Yes, sir. Um, I believe that I had forwarded this report to you, uh, probably a month or two ago. But upon reviewing it again, I decided that this is something that really should be brought to a work session so that the public would have, um, access to the information. I have also shared this with the, uh, manager at Nestle Purina because I wanted him to be aware of the amazing resource that is in his backyard. The numbers, um, that are included in this report are still through February. And the, uh, information that's provided in it, um, gives you, um, donations and how they're utilized, the number of animals that go through the, um, Regional Animal Shelter every single year. The simple fact that the animal shelter staff has active agreement with fifty-two releasing agencies is amazing. And, um, I went and provided all of the information on five separate seizures on, uh, that have occurred just this past twelve months, just to let you know that, you know, a very small group of staff and volunteers, um, have done an amazing work in handling all of these animals and being able to get them healthy again and dealing with all the court procedures and then being able to, um, send them out through the rescue organizations and getting these animals rehomed. So this, my primary objective was just bringing this to the meeting tonight is just so that it would be part of a public packet so that people would realize the amazing resource that we have in King William County and King and Queen. And how much this staff does. And the animal control officers as well. I want to, um, give them kudos because they definitely get out there and educate. And, um, so it does help. It helps immensely.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Tassanary?
Yes, ma'am. On the, uh, uncollected restitutions, is, is that money that's going to be lost? Or is there any way of getting that back?
We did reach out to the county attorney on that. At issue is some of the language that was, um, utilized, um, in the, uh, the restitution, uh, language by the, um, Commonwealth Attorney in King and Queen. But, um, she, the Commonwealth Attorney in King and Queen is, is a great advocate as well. And so she looked through other avenues. The, I believe there was one where the gentleman is actually serving time now. She's going, uh, along a different avenue to try to get some of that restitution. But in some cases, we do not ever receive it. This is actually a pretty good, um, receipt, um, for the amount that was put out. You know, one of the things that was, you know, concerning is that, uh, we were just having these seizures back to back. And the Great Danes that came in, that was an amazing number of very, very large dogs. And the shelter went through its entire year's food budget, just taking care of those animals. But, um, because of, you know, citizens from, you know, King William and King Queen and surrounding county providing donations, um, you know, everything was taken care of.
Yeah. Thank you.
Bobby, is, is this a gr, this restitution, is this just an agreement between the folks or is it court order?
It's court ordered.
Well, it can be. It can be collected or else.
The problem is, is that if a court order does not specifically state payments, just a spin amount, then that's kind of where they can fall through the cracks. And that's why we've gotten our county attorney involved, just to see if there's anything that we could do. I think one of case was ordered like that, where we haven't received any. But then, of course, the other individual that we haven't received any is because he's in jail. In Pennington, I believe.
Mrs. Tassinari, oh, go ahead.
I'm done, Stuart. Go ahead.
It seems like a large number of these seizures are from King and Queen County again. I know that we have an agreement. Do they, in cases like this, do they chip in a little more money? Or are we at the mercy of the agreement that we have with them? And regardless of the number of animals that are presented to our shelter?
Well, we have a good agreement in place with King and Queen. And they always live up to their annual commitment, whichever the dollar amount is that we propose to them. But when it comes to something like a seizure, that takes it out of their hands and puts it into the courts and the individuals that are being prosecuted.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, yes, Stephen, thanks for the report. Obviously, some of the images in there are startling and shocking to see what these animals get put through and then what our employees get put through to try to rehabilitate these animals and get them to home. So, you know, certainly express my gratitude. And I'm sure the gratitude of the board to our employees over there for the work that they do in dealing with these seizures when they come in and then just the day to day as well, which can, I'm sure, be just as unsettling.
And they're still closed, correct?
Yes, sir, they are. I do believe, though, that the manager is planning on opening the facility Friday along with the governor's order going into phase one.
Just limit the number of people coming in.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to the next item, 4J, updated meeting schedule, again, Ms. Tassinari.
Yes, sir. There was some confusion with when the calendar was approved in January. The, one of the calendars that was out on the website reflected May 25th is our meeting for this month. But that being a holiday, the date for the meeting should be May 18th. There was also questions about October 5th and the November 16th, as to why we elected those. And the reason that the board chose to have the October 5th and the November 16th is one in October is because of a holiday the next week, and in November because of vacay.
I saw the vacay. Vacay is on a Monday? Or is it that weekend? Oh. Tuesday night?
Generally speak, Sunday night and Monday night, and it wraps up Tuesday by noon.
Ah, okay.
So we're amenable to making any changes that y'all would like. Of course, we do have to change the May meeting to the 18th, next Monday.
Right. And that's already been changed on the website, hasn't it, Olivia?
Yes.
I don't see any reason to change any of the other ones. Does anybody else? I didn't know. The only reason I was saying for November, because the next week, we have another meeting. But sometimes we cancel that work session anyway. By the time we get to the end of the year, just leave it as it is.
That's generally what we've done in the past. Just leave it as it is. And if we have to make any adjustments, we can do it when the time, you know, as it draws near. And we've got a clear picture.
Okay. Any other, the other discussion? Okay.
Well, Mr. Chair, it's kind of along the same lines. The supervisors' work session that was in-person is now being advertised as available again. Are we cleared to sign up for that? And it's $350. It's the same price as in-person as it is being virtual, which is kind of odd.
Yeah.
Ed, what you sent out the other day with that question of whether or not we were funded for it was the Certified Supervisors Program, which is a different program than the new supervisor orientation that we were all going to go to at the beginning of the year.
Okay. Must have misread it.
I'll look at the email again when we get off, and I'm pretty sure that's what I saw come out the other day. You had asked about that, because I don't think they're doing another, you know, new supervisor forum. But they are going to do the Certified Supervisors Program. They're going to start virtual.
That's correct. The new supervisor forum, you all were signed up for and you have been refunded for. I actually received that money this week.
But Ed was saying it's.
We can discuss that, you know, if we've got the funding available and already budgeted, and somebody wants to do the Certified Supervisor Program, maybe we could regroup and talk about re-appropriating the money for that purpose. But I just wanted to be clear, that is different than what we were going to at the beginning.
Okay. Is that it? Okay, next item we have are the Board of Supervisors' comments. I don't know, I don't remember where I started last time. I guess we'll start with one. That way I can just go down the line. So Bill, did you have anything you wanted to bring up or something to bring forward for future meetings for us to look into?
Not really. I think we, I'm still getting complaints on VIPSa. They're restricting some folks and some folks are not. The thing is, I just show up down there and they haven't restricted me on anything. So they were saying that they couldn't put oil in there. But I went down there and I did the recycling on the oil. So I don't know. I just keep that in mind and we need to monitor that. I don't know if it's just the words getting out improperly by the employees or what's going on. But the folks that, they're not, the ones that I know that are calling me, they, they're really upset about it. And they've got, they carry all that stuff back home. And I think we just need to keep in mind that and for everybody to stay safe, even though they're starting to open up some stuff. I don't know. I've got my own opinion on some of it. Some of it's money. And dealing with the state parks and the private parks, I mean, they opened them and to the annuals. And I just, those people are on top of each other. And there's no social distancing on them. But that's my opinion on that. But be safe in anything you're doing and keep your distance when you can and wire a mask whenever. But that's all I have. And thank everybody that tuned in. I think we had about the same as last meeting. I see sixteen on there. I don't remember if it was eighteen. I can't remember, Ed, do you? But anyway, thank y'all again. And like I said, everybody be safe.
Travis?
Yeah, not, not too much to say. Everybody, like Bill said, stay safe out there. I appreciate the efforts of all of you that are here on staff and keep things going and going as smoothly as they had been, given the situation that we find ourselves in. You know, continue to stay strong and be safe, and we're behind you. So thanks a lot.
Okay, I guess, Mr. Garber?
Yeah, I would, you know, thank everybody for joining tonight. And certainly want everybody to be safe, especially since, you know, like Bill touched on, we're starting to open things up. And there are a lot of people out there that are not doing what they need to do. And they're taking for granted, you know, other people's health also. And the sick leave thing, you know, to reiterate again, that's going to be a hard decision for everybody. And nobody wants to do that, but it's going to be tough. You know, we're going to have to decide what we're going to do. We're certainly not trying to take something away from anybody. But, you know, we're at a point now that we're going to have to start looking at options. Anyway, thanks again. And until the next time, everybody be safe.
Okay. Mr. Moore?
Yes, thanks for those that have joined this evening. Just watching out, the cold weather should be coming to an end here. Eighty, ninety degrees this coming weekend. People are going to be out and about. Just want everybody to stay as safe as possible. Watch out for each other. Be nice. And just want to make note of the fact that this is National Police Week. I see Sheriff Walton's on. Just want to say, take care of you guys and girls and let everybody know we appreciate them.
Okay. I guess I wanted to make something clear. It's, this really wasn't supervisors' comments. That's at our, at our board meeting. This was supposed to be for the work session, for issues that we wanted to bring up, anything we want to look forward to in the future. But nobody has anything they want to bring up to look into. Or, I mean, we always talk about it online. I see all this stuff, but then nobody says anything when we get in here. Everybody's okay. Any issues we need to bring up?
I brought up VIPSa.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Well, in that vein, I would like to talk at some point about bringing back some of the lost days, especially in District Five. Upworth Center got shut down, I think it was, what, 2016, 2017? Sure would like to have that day back.
What company was that?
I'm sorry, it was the Upworth Station.
Remember when, remember when Bob came up with the great idea of cutting them? And then his idea was that they would close both of my centers for two days? And I said, no. So sorry about that one, Ed.
Right. That brings up a good point, right? That's what I wanted to bring up, is Ms. Tassinari still here? Because I think last year, we, we cut them in the beginning of the budget session. And then we had an amendment that we reinstated their full amount. But I was under the impression that we were going to reinstate them so they would come back to what we were before. We've got the cuts, but none of, like everybody said, none of those stations were open to their regular hours. So I'm kind of confused. I guess Ed has a good.
It's going to be the library you're thinking about. We did cut the library, or at least didn't fund a requested increase, and they cut back days. And we went back and funded the request, and they restored the days. But I don't remember ever discussing restoring VIPSa.
I thought we, I thought we redid up, we did, redid VIPSa, too. We didn't re, oh, we kept them. Oh, I thought we upped them, too. Okay, never mind. Like, that maybe that's something we need to look into, like Ed said. Like you said, the centers are having a lot of trouble with the parking and every, oh. I guess this is another thing for, I guess, for planning commission. The plan for the central garage one seems to have gotten scrapped. I guess it was supposed to get a loop in, but I guess that never came about. I guess, sir.
Mr. Greenwood, would you like me to speak to that?
If you could, I'm just curious. I was just, when I heard it, but I hadn't really seen anything.
Well, we investigated the possibility. The problem is, is that when we started doing the soil samples, it was evident that when that site closed, they just did the obligatory six, maybe 12 inches of soil on top of the litter. And so when they did the dig test, they were hitting trash at about six or seven inches down. So that really excluded the majority of that 10 acres to about one acre that was viable. And looking at the cost as compared to expanding and the utilization, it just, it wasn't feasible.
All right, thank you. And I want to thank everybody for coming, too. Like everybody said, it did look like we had maybe 22 at the max. So that was a pretty good group for a work session. And everybody stay safe. I'm the same way as some other people are saying. It seems like, I feel my personal, that we're maybe rushing into this a little too fast. It seems like the, the numbers, we weren't supposed to go into more, I guess, of opening things until there was a straight, steady decline, 14 days of no cases. But I haven't seen that yet. So I'm worried that, but I'm hoping people will take their own initiative and still wear their masks and still social distance. But it seems like the younger generation, they don't care. They seem to congregate. I saw a bunch of them up at, up at Benny's the other night. They were all in the parking lot with folding chairs, all just sitting around within two, three feet of each other. I'm like, I don't understand.
Mr. Chair, they're invincible at that age, you don't.
Like we were.
That's right. Let me back up just a little bit. I'm sorry. We're at the end, but we're at 12 now, Bobby, and still one death.
That's what I heard.
Yeah, I hadn't heard the 12.
I hadn't heard the death.
Eleven, eleven and one death and one hospitalized.
I hadn't heard the deaths, wow.
Me either. Me either.
All right, thank you. And like I said, thanks, everybody, for coming and all the reports we got from everybody. Thanks for all the chairs and the departments that came out and all of the fellow commissioners. And thanks, everybody, for coming and be safe. And then we'll see you next Monday for our regular meeting.
And if nobody else has got anything, I make a motion, adjourn.
Second.
Motion made, properly seconded. Ms. Lawrence, will you call roll?
Mr. Moore? Mr. Miskowski?
I've got my answer.
You don't want to go? Always muted.
I somehow opened up chat, and that won't let you unmute by.
Mr. Hodges? Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for coming.
Yeah, all you guys be safe.
You, too. Thanks, Bobby. Thanks, Olivia.
Bye.
Thanks, everybody.